This regular meeting of the City of Plainview Council on this Tuesday, April eleventh, six thirty P M. Copy of the open meetings all posted in the mapboard of the council chamber. Everyone three eyes for the pledge of blessing.
Pledge of blessing to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Tyler.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Dody.
Here.
Brian.
Aye.
Approval of minutes from previous meeting.
And who would I be approved from the meeting? Or whatever day that was, if it was that. Okay. Mark, Mark, Andrew. Second?
Second, Matt. Carter.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Dody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, I'm sorry, claims and payroll. Any questions on claims and payroll?
I don't have an answer.
I'd answer this.
I'm not motioning for claims and payroll.
Second?
Second.
Brian.
Aye.
Dody.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, reports manner. You leans out of track meet, so she's gonna try and make it here later. That brings us to Chief Chris.
So, last month was fairly busy. Made a couple of arrests that had to do with that surf warrant that we executed at the end of February. Got a big court day tomorrow, have about nine cases that are going on for the judge that are ours, so that's, I think, a pretty positive note that we're doing what we need to be doing. It's not been all me, it's been help with the state patrol and the county. What I have, I put in front of you, you guys in that packet, it's an emergency take action. Have you guys seen that or are you aware of that? Anybody heard of this? Okay, so, what this comes from is, I love you guys foundation. That was in regards to a school shooting at, uh, Platte Canyon in, um, Littleton, Colorado. Sixteen-year-old girl was shot and killed by a, uh, school shooter. And the last text that she sent to her dad was, "I love you guys," after he said, "Are you okay?" So, I would ask you guys to go take a look at that, um, website. It was brought to my attention, um, by the superintendent and the school safety board, which just met about a week and a half ago, they invited me to come up, which was, I think, a very good, a good thing. We discussed, um, the reunifi- evacuation and then the reunification process, and what my thought process was on that. And those of you that have littles, the reunification process was, went well last year. And they asked me what my thoughts were as far as evacuation. And I think the general consensus was that, um, they broadcast the route that they were gonna take, the elementary school and the high schoolers. And I told them that I had a problem with that because if, in fact, there was a real-world situation and somebody calls in a bomb threat, that individual's gonna know exactly where we are farming those kids to. And I said, "When I'm posted up on the highway, I put myself in that shooter's mind frame, and I picked off every single one of those kids that was being sent to the city hall." So I told them, when they want to do another practice, to please not put it in the newspaper, Facebook. I had a few calls from the library because there were some, um, less undesirable people that were up there because they knew the little kids were going to be there. They said they don't have a problem with that, and I, and I thank them for this. Also, um, oh gosh, lost my train of thought. Their, uh, Dr. Alt said that he's gonna go through some of the, um, actions that they take. They're gonna call me when they practice them so that I have an idea of how they're going to conduct them in the school. And then, anybody like fire department, or county, or state patrol, and those people that are going to be responding, what their take on that is too. So, um, I thought that was a really good thing that they invited me to come up. I also asked them if they had a backup plan in case the library or city hall were not available, or, in fact, I don't wanna say infiltrated, that sounds too militaristic, but, um, compromised, so to speak, and they don't have a backup place for these kids to go to. I told them that the reunification was great, but that's because it wasn't real world. It's gonna be chaotic if something does happen. And I also mentioned that it hasn't happened in Plainview, so everything is okay until it isn't. So we need to be aware of things like that. So you guys, take, take an opportunity, especially for those of you that have littles or grandkids or whatever, to look at that website, 'cause I think it's very informative. And this is what the school is going to start using, they're gonna utilize this. I wanna talk to you about the fentanyl presentation, those of you that didn't make it, it went really well. Ashley told me that they are running out of fentanyl faster than they can get it in.
Narcan.
I mean, Narcan, my bad.
What kind of person?
Oh my god, maybe I shouldn't have gone. So no, the, the, the Narcan is running out faster than they can get it in, so I think that it's, I kind of hit home. You know, and, and Mrs. Wolf, when she gave her presentation, I think that touched a lot of people in the community, so all four of us that were able to make it anyway, um, inside joke, but... And then, I wanna talk to you about Andrew Funston, he graduates on the twenty-first of April. He's, he has complete eighty hours of FTO, so that's, gosh, based on my schedule, I'm hoping to get it done in a couple weeks. I can't guarantee that. Um, he seems to be doing pretty well. I don't want to cross that bridge yet because he still has the final exam to take, and that one's very nerve-wracking, he's pretty nervous about it. I don't doubt that he's gonna do fine, but he's a little bit skeptical, you know, and I can't take it for him, and I told him that. So, you guys, please just keep your fingers crossed that he, for my sanity, passes. Okay, so, um, I guess I don't really have anything else off the top of my head. Do you guys have anything, any questions for me?
I heard a good comment about you at post prom, that you have a good rapport with the students.
Oh.
Think that's good.
Oh, that's good. I will tell you, I was actually kinda shocked. Uh, Mike Sauer gave me a kudos and said that he was really happy that I've got a good rapport with the kids, and I just about fell out in the chair. Yes, I have to get kicked out of the school board meeting a couple times. All right, you guys, thank you.
Economic Development Report.
Hello, everybody. I've seen you for a couple months. On our housing project, uh, we have hit the halfway mark on that, so if you haven't driven up and looked at the fourplex, um, sightings on, garage doors are on, so it's looking really good. Kelly Cabst is our general contractor from Green Gables, and he's been great about giving us regular updates and keeping us, keeping us informed of what's happening there. We are on track for, um, June one rental, and, uh, we're working with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development now to set up a ribbon cutting with the governor's office. We're gonna try to knock out the Pierce and the Plainview project on the same day. So as soon as we get that date, we'll let you know. Definitely want you to be there for that ribbon cutting. Additionally, the grant that we utilized for that housing project, we were going to do it again this year. We had the investor, we had a project, um, and we had everything done. The issue there was, we had to hit fifty percent funding expended on the current project before we could apply for a new one, and at the time, um, we had not hit that mark yet. So that project is on hold, but it is planned for next year. So next year, um, around the same location, we're planning for three duplexes, six units. It'll be the exact same project on a few drive-by that Pierce has. Same floor plan, same layout, so two bed, two bath, two car garage, uh, fifteen, little over fifteen hundred square feet. So...
I have a question on rental prices on those. Do you have any ballpark of what those are gonna rent for?
So the income qualified units, there's certain units that have to be income qualified because they are using the grant funding. Those units, the maximum amount of rent can be ten sixty-four.
'Cause I know the duplexes in Pierce are renting for seventeen hundred dollars.
The income qualified units there are ten sixty-four, and then there are three units we call free or unattached, and these are the units that help cash flow that project, 'cause you cannot build new construction and expect it to cash flow a thousand dollars a month. So, the unattached units, um, in Pierce, started at fifteen fifty, they're now up to seventeen fifty, but if you look at the Norfolk market, that's going for twenty-four hundred, so it's still less than Norfolk. The Plainview project, the, the unattached units are looking at fifteen hundred, but they also may go up based off of what's coming back from the market. And again, these projects went higher because COVID, supply chain issues, um, and all of those things. So, all of them went over budget by almost thirty-five percent. So, um, but, good news is, um, Pierce ones, they actually have actually waiting lists, and so does the Plainview one. So there is a waiting list of people coming in, and, um, should be good.
So, for, for the waiting list, or that I was told today, they gotta apply, if it's income-related, they gotta apply to get an application?
Everybody has to apply for an application.
Is there, is there information out there?
Yeah.
Not yet, because...
There's a wire hanging up to call.
Oh, is there, okay. To call, yeah, you wanna call Jim Marat, 'cause he's the investor slash owner. Um, and then N E Ned is our grant administrator in Norfolk, and they're the ones that are doing the income qualification on the income-qualified units, so... Childcare, so we've had several discussions revolving on childcare, uh, since we held that county-like meeting. We've been working with Tyler and, and gotten all the information for him there. Additionally, um, that daycare committee for Plainview decided to maybe look at doing a community center in three phases. Phase one being the daycare center. So Jeremy was kind enough to reach out to the city engineer, and they did submit a rendering just in the last week, um, a, a proposed draft of what that might look like. Um, and then now everyone's kind of throwing their two cents in, and, and we'll try to work it out. Um, I have been working with, uh, University of Nebraska on a daycare impact study, an economic impact study, to show the value of that here. So we're, we're probably looking at construction about a million, and then with infrastructure and everything else, we're looking at about one point eight. There currently is still that twenty-seven million dollar grant from the state that will allow for equipment, it can see salaries, um, it can do a number of things. So we'll look at a combination of those things. Um, separately, I had crafted a, a childcare survey for the community of Ozon, and I forwarded that survey to Jeremy and Jock or Bob yesterday, asked for their thoughts. Um, if they think that looks good, then Ozon's is gonna be running for the next three weeks. We don't wanna confuse the area, so as soon as there's a, we'll run the Plainview one. The survey is crafted to look at our issues and needs for today, but also on a five-year track. So we're asking a lot of questions about where will you be in five years, um, 'cause we're trying to plan for the future. And then this morning, we did find out that our, the application we submitted to C four K, which is Community for Kids, we were accepted as one of their communities for this year. Um, so that will be going through PSET Inc., which is our nonprofit, um, and we'll be starting to meet with them. We have a fifteen-member core team that's already been assembled, uh, members of each community across the county. Um, for Plainview, uh, Bob and Jeremy are on the core team, and there's a number of others, but if anyone's interested in joining, you can. Um, it is a three-year project, as we start, uh, tackling the daycare issues and developing long-term strategies to address, uh, what's happening here. Also, that comes with thirty thousand dollars for planning activities that we can utilize. Um, the AARP grant was submitted for your RV dump station last month. We should find out about it by the end of this month or early next month that we will receive that. Let's see. More. Um, we are also working now on a hotel study. I have reached out to some of the economic development offices across the state that have been successful in attracting, um, some hotel chains to the area, um, and I did make a contact that was very good. He reached back and said that there was potentially two partners that would be interested in doing something here if we had a study done, so we will be looking at doing that hotel study. Um, they don't come cheap, so we missed the deadline to hit, like, this keynote application, but I'm targeting the next quarter to maybe look at that. Um, L B A forty is not a real option for us at the moment because we have drained that effectively for new businesses, which is good. So we're hoping to look at the hotel study. So what we're gonna be doing over the next month is connecting with two planning firms, uh, that come highly recommended. We will set up, Jeremy and I will set up calls with them, talk to them, hopefully do a presentation for you, um, and then you'll have all that information prior to a keynote application, so we can hopefully have a decision then. We are also going to be, uh, initiating a shop local campaign. Um, one of the things we're trying to do now is recession-proof our economy, um, and doing a buy local campaign. So you're gonna see a lot of information coming out through social media, through our channels, um, asking people to shop local, talking about the benefits. Um, I don't want you to think that this is a slam against some of the chains in town, 'cause it's not, um, but it is definitely education for people. I don't think some people realize, when they shop outside the community, what that really does to your community. Um, we vote with our dollars, and we're gonna maybe show them through some graphics and some videos and some other materials that we have, um, exactly how much impact it can have by keeping their dollars focused here. So, kind of what we're up to right now. Any questions? Oh, and I forgot, with the, uh, refresh my memory, Bob, we talked about it, uh, creative districts.
Forty.
Creating a creative district here in Plainview. Um, there's some grant funding out there for creative districts, now that we've gone through our DTR. Um, we're, we're gonna hopefully wrap that up this year, and then phase two, uh, the plan was always to either do street skate, uh, public works, or look at creative districts, and that is beautifying the downtown area. Um, you know, do you bring in greenery, planters, baskets, murals, um, things that make that downtown more attractive to people, maybe brand it. I encourage you to go back and look at our DTR plan that we got from Confluence, and if you don't have the online link, I could email it to you, just send me a text. Starting on page fifty-one of that DTR plan, uh, Confluence puts in a number of ideas about how we can, um, help downtown look a little bit nicer. Um, so if you have any thoughts, if you see something on those pages, something that you like, just shoot me a text, email, or give me a phone call, and we'll be sure to write it down. Um, but we'll be tr- trying to put together a plan of what that might look like, present that to you, and then go after the grant funding if it's acceptable to you guys. That will be like a late summer project. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll jump down to number nine. Public hearing, uh, lot split for James and Tom to Ashaw. Southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section thirty-four, township twenty-eight north, range four west of the six P M, Pierce County, Nebraska.
Okay, so we had a zoning board meeting, um, yesterday about it, and it is, for people who don't know the legals, it is A and R construction is separated away from the cornfield. Obviously, the brothers split up and, so the property split up. Anna over here.
Yep.
Can talk about more, she's there.
Yes. I can, um, actually pass around one of the surveys here. It just, like Jeremy said, separates the building site from the field, and, um, the building site will remain four point three acres. So, I'll just pass around the survey so you can all check it out.
We're, they did recommend it, so...
We already had it, yeah.
We already had it, yeah. I'll take them back. But that's okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Not the worst thing I could have.
It really doesn't affect anybody except their taxes.
Any discussion?
No comment.
It's up to them to get along, not us.
Yeah, so you have any comments? From the public, anybody?
This is where we get to talk to the public?
Yeah.
Yes.
Public?
Public.
Don't speak in a gallery.
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
A second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Aye.
Dody.
Aye.
Brian.
Your own fault.
I'm here, I promise.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, looking for a motion then to approve the lot split for James and Tom to Ashaw.
Make a motion to approve the lot split for James and Tom to Ashaw?
Second. Brian.
Aye.
Dody.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Back up to reports, uh, city superintendent report, everything, Jeremy?
Uh, don't blame that, like you said, you'll see, uh, we have a sewer machine in there today. I'll be on obviously next report. Um, look at Bob for the asbestos removal, we did get that sent off to the state, it was approved. Um, I believe May, the first week of May will be, the house will come down, first, second week, so it may be on.
Any plans?
Garage will be with it.
Are you talking about the house?
Yeah.
North, it should, but...
Was there a house between the two?
There's a, yeah.
Seen the dirt work, and I'm like...
That garage got sold? Huh? Somebody said they, somebody bought that garage, they didn't, they shouldn't.
No.
You might see Troy taking some things off, but not the outside, no, what's that?
Any plans for street sweep, you know?
Uh, yes, there should be, yep. Right now, we're working on some water lines that we have to get fixed, so...
Awesome. Sewer line, okay.
And sewer lines.
Sewer line.
Uh, that's J A J, they're, they're Cambria and Sewer Lines right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's my issue.
Yep.
And you, and you shutted the alley this afternoon and didn't blow up my bathroom, so thank you for that.
It's a good thing. Success.
Turned the pressure down a little, I take it?
What's that alley, really?
Really traumatic for the secretaries. Toilet lid flaps up and the bathroom explodes.
I don't think, I don't think we're getting phone calls for anybody.
Okay, city attorney report.
I got two things, the Colby people sent up a report, I sent it to the office. Bob, I never got back to you, did you?
We'll just, we'll just wait till it all...
Save on the Colby reports and get them all together at some point in the future?
I did send them an email, and I requested their presence.
Okay.
At a meeting when this is discussed, because I know there are a few questions, and so I have nothing back.
And that's what we'd ask them for in the first place, and yet, we still just gotta look at the report to start...
I haven't heard anything back from her, so I may send another friendly email.
And nothing on the agenda. And then my other thing is, not, also nothing on the agenda, but just a brief report. The mayor and I have talked about the future of the city attorney position. You know, I quit on prosecutions here a year ago, and I take it that the new guy is not working out the best there. I talked with Bob, and he would kinda like to get it all back under one hat. I've been advertising for quite a while for a young lawyer to come to Plainview, and lord, it's hard to get anybody to come and be full-time and support the community. We now have a Plainview graduate coming out of law school in a year. Scott Boy, he's second year law student, he just came in to talk to me two weeks ago. So there's some potential there, and I would hope if there's any potential of him coming, that the city would give him full support when the time comes. But, apart from that, if the prosecutor thing is not working, and we want one hat for the city attorney, I don't wanna do it, because I don't wanna do the prosecution stuff and have to leave town that much. So I'm perfectly well persuaded to retire and get out of the way from the rest of the city attorney business, if that's, uh, what makes things work well. Just one more thing I can cut back on. And, uh, we'll probably do some kind of an official announcement next month, and then there'll be an agenda item too, 'cause you'll have to have some action. So we'll figure it out then. If it's not on the agenda, if there's any questions here, they'd have to be briefed and almost nonexistent, but... Or Bob, if you have any comments?
I don't, other than the fact that we'll address the replacement next month. Council will approve the replacement and wages.
I have a question. I have a loan closing coming up. USDA will ever advance the funds. Are you okay with setting up a loan closing for, like, next week or the week after?
Well, I'm still, I take it fully on duty, you're told the next meeting.
Just still checking.
Uh, we can do that if we wish.
Yeah.
And Bob and I have talked about the possibility of limited specialized contract work if need be, and I guess I can do that if it comes to that. But I think, as I suggested to him today, that would almost have to be at the request of the mayor. We can't just have just anybody call up on the city's ticket and burn time. But, uh, if it was done that way, we could make it work.
Yeah, Bruce and I just talked about that today, if something comes up, you know, if it's short-term and he can handle it till next month, fine, if we have to pass it over, we will. I mean, Bruce can pass it over to the next...
It's the harvest.
So, yeah, whatever, we're...
They desperately need the money.
Bruce and Maury want me to do it.
Well, we're still good.
Okay.
For the next thirty to forty-five days here, and then we'll get to the next meeting and maybe make some adjustments.
I'll repeat it next month too, but Bruce will stay on as counsel for Colby Capital, since he knows all that correspondence. And, uh, you know, if our new attorney needs any kind of consultation with Bruce and his records, Bruce will stay on as a per hour attorney.
Yeah, we'll just quit, quit totally on any retainer or anything, and then whatever it is will be specialty, keep track of time and do it.
That's a lot of records, I've seen that.
Yeah. And if there's, and if there's not many questions, I'll go figure it out.
Let's take him out for Carter, he's the kid that we've told you about.
I think he's got good potential, and he sounds interesting.
Yeah, he called me over the weekend asking about loans.
Ooh.
Told me about a deal, and I said we can make it happen.
Well, I'll do everything I can to get him to come. I, the, the whole game is get somebody to live in town.
Yeah.
And be part of the community, that's what I've been holding out for.
I've been telling him to talk to you for a while, and I told you about it. The board finally told him to come talk to you, and that's why he came up.
The only thing is, he's awful tall. I walked out to shake his hand, and I go, "Paul." God, he's big.
Bruce and I talked about that too. If we get somebody that's kind of new here and maybe, you know, live in town and new business, almost certainly...
He sounded pretty excited. The only hang that he had when I spoke with him is, in South Dakota, he can get all the student loans cup, you know, covered. And I told him, well, hey, we've got money, we can help you buy a practice, and we can still help sum with the student loans, so in the long run, you're better off coming here, so he thought about it that way, and he's pretty excited.
I'm sure we can, we can go a whole other way to make that work.
Yeah.
And most of, most of his classmates have stuck around here too.
Oh, yeah, he's at our house all the time, 'cause he's one of Cole's best friends, so...
He could be off to a running start with knowing a lot of people and everything, I think it could work good.
Yeah.
If you give any advice on being a new attorney in a small town, you're gonna be a Paul.
Well, it's at least ten or fifteen years before you piss off half the population. After that point, you're doing a mess.
Will be.
Okay, moving on to number five, discussion, general liability insurance update, Dennis Johnson, Mr. Rowe.
Okay. Thanks for letting me have some of your time here, appreciate that. So I'll pass out an outline of what we have here.
I run you down. This is what you do at six thirty at night, huh?
Yeah. Also, the city gets a dividend, again, this year for its three thousand thirty-one dollars. And that dividend is based on the experience of, uh, uh, all of the communities within Nebraska that are insured with this, with the company we have here, EMC, uh, EMC Mutual. And last year, it's not as much as last year, there's a lot of wind and hail around the state, so last year, I think the dividend was nineteen thousand, but you're still getting one, three thousand thirty-one dollars, so I'll get that to...
Courtney?
Roger?
I guess. There you go.
Just to run through the coverage, uh, on the property, there was a change this year. Sat down with Jeremy, and we took off the generators, since they're not functional, and one, I guess, is sold. So, that did reduce the premium. What it would have been, uh, had we left the generators on, is sixteen thousand dollars in premium more than what you're paying this year. So, uh, it's a pretty big, pretty big item that's taken off. Uh, we still have the, uh, brick building, that's still part of the blanket cover this year of eleven million, six oh seven, eighty-four. Uh, that's all on the replacement cost form, uh, special form payrolls, they call it, and, uh, agreed value. In other words, the company agrees with the values that we've set, uh, to come up with this eleven million, six oh seven. You have a five thousand dollar deductible, if there's a fire, wind, hail, that sort of thing. The general liability, the same as before, it has a one million dollar limit per occurrence. If you have two or three claims... If you have two or three claims in one year, it's an aggregate of two million. And, uh, five thousand medical, that means if there's a member of the public that would trip on a sidewalk or the street, I guess I should say, that the city maintains and they, we can pay their medical bills up to five thousand without any liability. If they sue the city, then you go into the million dollar limit.
Can I ask you a question on that? I thought the property owner, if they had to pay the liability first and then the city, is that not right?
Well, yeah, I said sidewalk, I'm gonna change that to street.
Oh, street, okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, my mistake there. The, the sidewalk would be up to the property owner to take care of, not the city, right? That's a good question. Crime coverage, we have a fifty thousand dollar blanket for you. Death limit with a two fifty deductible, uh, includes staple performance of duty and the city treasurer is included for coverage. The inland marine, that's scheduled equipment like any caterpillars, dozers, tractors, mowers. And that's a list that I go over with Jeremy each year to get it updated, and we'll be doing that, yeah. To see if there's any changes or not. The, also includes blanket on computer hardware and, and software. Thirty-nine thousand eight ninety-five on the hardware and twenty-two thousand five hundred on the software. There again, that's, uh, the special form coverage with the two fifty deductible. Business auto, we have, we schedule the vehicles that are owned by the city. That has a million dollar limit and liability and the five thousand medical payments for other than city employees that would be in there. City employees are covered at a work comp. And it includes a million in uninsured and underinsured motorists. It's a five hundred dollar deductible for comprehensive and collision on scheduled pickups and cars. Thousand deductible on any trucks or commercial trucks or trailers. The work comp, that's pretty much set by the state of Nebraska. That has, uh, five hundred thousand bodily injury each accident, uh, and five hundred thousand by disease. Might mention that under the work comp, that's experience rated based on the city's own experience. And an average rate would have a factor of one, that means there's no surcharge or no credit. Right now, the city is down to a point, uh, point eight seven. So you're hitting a thirteen percent discount off the normal work comp rates. At one time, the city was up around a one point three five, I think, if I remember right. In other words, a thirty-five percent surcharge, which is doing a good job and getting this down and livable. So that helps when the rate's low. Cyber liabilities included.
Excuse me, Dennis, can I ask you, what is by disease?
Uh, well, if there is a, that doesn't mean COVID.
Okay. Okay, yes.
Yes, or flu. It's a, a disease that could be contracted from the job. In other words, some sort of a disease, I can't think of a good example.
Get Ebola, get Ebola from the sewer worker or something like that?
Yeah, that could be something that, that, I, I have never had one with, uh, in fact, I don't remember even having one by disease. Because I know flu isn't gonna be covered because you can't prove that you got flu at work or COVID or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I might mention that, yes, five hundred thousand, uh, it says by accident. Work comp is, it's not limited to the five hundred thousand, that's a liability type thing. If an employee is injured on the job, the, the medical bills for that employee are unlimited. That can go on and on and on. We've had one that happened, gosh, twenty-five years ago and we're still paying, or the company's still paying a claim on that. It lost a leg and has to have a new prosthesis every so often, so. Something like that, it's, it's a pretty good benefit for the employees. No deductible, unlimited medical, plus you get, after missing a week's work, you get, uh, a, a weekly disability, so. So it's a good, good benefit there and required by law. The cyber liability, a hundred thousand data compromise, a hundred thousand for the computer attacks. Then the public officials and employment practices liability. This is one that you've got into a couple of times here in recent years with the Dollar Store was one. This got, came into play on defense costs. And another one was with the police officer, uh, where there was a settlement made under this section of your policy too. That's a million each loss, two million in aggregate with a five thousand dollar deductible. The law enforcement liability is a million, a two million dollar aggregate, that has a thousand dollar deductible. And of course, that would pick up, uh, police officer that could be sued for, uh, a wrongful type act in the performance of their duty. Then we have an umbrella of four million. So these other liability limits, if you see, for a million on the general liability and a million on the auto liability and the work comp of a higher thousand, you've got another four million above that. So if you got a million on your auto and a four million on umbrella, you really have a five million dollar amount of liability. That is a very brief rundown.
Did you say the cyber was a hundred thousand? Is it hard to increase that? That's probably not very much, given the exposure the city has for so many people on the city computers and employees and what have you.
It gets much more expensive because of the cyber attacks that come about.
If you had to fix identity theft people stuff for four hundred people, you'd eat that up pretty fast.
True.
Always present. One question, the inland marine scheduled contractors' equipment, have we ever used that?
Uh, yeah, you have.
And what, what, what is that for exactly? Is that repairs or is that?
That's for the equipment itself.
Everything gets damaged?
Yeah. Uh, you, well, you had a fire out at the, uh, at the dump here one year.
Transfer station?
Some of the equipment got caught on fire.
Okay, something like that. But, but not breakdowns if you, transmission?
No, not, not a mechanical thing.
Mechanical, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
That would've been like when our, with that, when our paylitter had that accident, were that, were you involved in that too then?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Downtown artificial intelligence comes in, so we won't even go there.
What was that?
I'm sarcastic, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to number six, discussion, action ordinance number nine eight six. Issuing bond anticipation notes in the amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars for our three paving projects.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brad Slawder here, thanks so much for having me up tonight. The, excuse me, the ordinance we have in front of you allows us to issue interest-only notes to fund construction for the three paving, lots of paving projects you folks are moving forward with. Statute requires essentially that the paving be completed and then once the paving has a certificate of substantial completion from your engineer, we can actually lock long-term rates on the bond issue. So we're providing note-only financing to you folks for the, the, uh, the duration of construction. Do you have any idea, did they give you an idea on a construction timeline?
Uh, the engineer was gonna get back to me, they think they might start here at the end of April doing construction, and he didn't give me a timeframe yet.
They didn't, okay. So, so the only catch with the notes is we usually limit a ninety, for the notes to be outstanding for ninety days. So if we, if we get the funding to you, if they start in late April, you won't have billables till May. So we'll probably get you the notes closing in May, allow you to have them paid off by August. And so if the project certifies substantially complete by August, we'll lock rates on the permanent financing.
I think their, the contract says they have you done by November, so that'll probably fit right in there.
Perfect, okay, wonderful. Uh, I, I've got handouts for you just to look at so you have copies, but this is kind of a breakdown. Page one details note financing specifics. And then page two is a ten-year amortization. And then page three is a fifteen-year AM, and I just wanted to give these all to you. Anybody else see the copy? Nope, bedtime reading, alright.
You should pray it looks better here, I think the ordinance said six percent.
Yeah, so the, the ordinance, we, we have to detail enough to exceed amount in the ordinance, so the ordinance, we put up to six hundred thousand, up to six percent on the notes. You have until December fifteenth of twenty twenty-three to take action, essentially for this ordinance to be in effect, but we would anticipate an effective rate, once we take into account paying bond council, the drafted district creation documentation, giving legal opinion on the bonds, paying the financing expense, DTC fees, all that stuff. I would guess your effective rate on the notes is probably about four and a half percent to four seventy-five. Short-term yields are just a lot higher than, than long-term stuff with the yield curve being inverted, so I would assume that's where we land. Right now, if we don't have a lot of movement on long-term rates, we're probably looking at an effective rate of four and a quarter on a ten-year and maybe a four fifty on a fifteen-year. You're looking on the schedules, which would be pages two and three. The far right is kind of the average annual debt service, so if we end up funding, I put it in aggregate amount of funding at around five hundred and fifty to five hundred and sixty thousand, all in with miller's fees plus construction. If we end up there, you're probably looking at a ten-year amortization around seventy thousand dollars a year with a, an annual payment of around fifty thousand dollars a year, little north of fifty thousand dollars a year if we do fifteen years. But the key piece will be kind of the interest expense difference between the two, and we'll, we'll kind of keep you updated on this, Jeremy and Courtney, I'll keep you updated on rates as we flux away through this, but on a, on a ten-year AM, you're probably looking at total interest of around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. If you go fifteen years, you're gonna pay north of two hundred thousand on the interest side, so kicking that AM out another five years from ten to fifteen, which is statutory maximum, increases your interest expense to a pretty good degree. So, not that I'm trying to push you one direction or the other, we'll do whatever you want us to do, but, uh, but essentially this allows us to put the note financing in, so what we would do is just wait to hear from Jeremy on saying, hey, we know the bid price is right, little shy of five hundred and seven thousand. We know what Miller needs on that, or a few folks are gonna pay that out of pocket, and then we would just lock rates on whatever portion of the note financing you need. Halfway and five fifty, whatever that number comes to. Any questions about that at all?
If you mind gathering, I read through the thing, the, the sure answer for city attorney review is if the city attorney jack spending, he won't give you the money. I think in general, we should probably just accept their document. I like to proofread and see if it doesn't say Columbus or something like that. But about, other than that, there's not much I can adjust for. Now, they had to call Courtney because she only gave me half the pages.
At least you read your packet then, I know you read your packet.
Every, every other page was missing, I thought, it seems odd.
Hey, you read your packet though, look at that.
I, I do ask, when we issue the bonds, can I come back if council meetings are just fun on a regular basis? Yeah, I'm gonna get a pad for that chair and I'm just gonna sit here and watch, watch the excitement.
They get even better.
Yeah. You can always watch us on YouTube.
So if I'm not here, I'll be there.
Oh, you need to come in person.
It's way better.
Oh, you can have.
But any questions about that at all on the ordinance, kind of how that's gonna go in? So essentially this gives authority for, for us, the city staff and I, to kind of get everything finalized according to your needs, and then you folks would see me again by August, September timeline, November. If that sounds like a plan?
Paying big bucks to talk to you, so.
Yeah, I'll make sure I bother them a lot to do the whole process. It's a pleasure though, folks, appreciate it, thanks so much. Thank you so much for having me up. Thank you. And there, there is one document, the acknowledgement receipt of meeting, you have your own, this Courtney? That they signed when they come in?
This, yeah. Do you want me to send that to you?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll use yours. I just, okay, I just, I brought one just basically, this is the ordinance, Doc.
Oh, you'll sign this, I can send this.
Perfect. Yep, that works great.
Alright.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it, thanks so much.
Any more discussion on ordinance nine eight six?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance nine eight six.
I'll sign that motion.
Can we, the state, before you vote on that, is they like you to waive the second and third readings first. They, I think it's bad backwards, but we need to do it their way.
Who's saying?
The bond council people. The guy that has to bless all of us or you don't get the money.
Next lot, Brad, you can tell us.
We just, we just slide it in there.
Well, the, the copy Courtney has reached that way, and it says the first step is waive the second and third reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading for ordinance nine eight six.
I'll sign that motion.
Brian, hi, Jody.
Hi.
Green.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance nine eight six.
I'll sign that motion.
Do I have to say it a certain way?
That's good enough.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Jody.
Brian.
Aye.
I'll let him know that you cannot waste the service.
Yes.
Green says change.
I'll say, you guys sent me up there all the way north, all ass backwards, embarrassing me on YouTube.
The one in six-year road plan. That's the one that you need.
We might bring that up, we must always mention that, I mean, why they do it. Why do you waive the second, third reading until you've had the first reading?
I would, I would agree. Shows you where I'm at on the totem pole, though.
I'm glad you've been with us for fifty years.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it, have a great evening, thanks, thank you.
Okay, it brings us to number seven, proclamation, National Library Week, April twenty-third to twenty-ninth. Where you have Donna in the back.
Donna, stand up. Come up here, come up here, we're happy to have you, aren't we?
Oh, yes, yes.
Let me here reads it, I don't read it. We'll read it to you, how about that?
We just want you to have you stand up here.
Good job, you do a good job.
National Library Week pro, twenty twenty-three proclamation. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civil engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore may it resolve that I, Bob Smith, Mayor, proclaim National Library Week, April twenty-third to twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available.
Good job, Brian.
I would like to say that our, our board, Larry Board, pretty active about foundation and they're always trying to improve the place and with Donna and Tammy.
So a lot goes on we don't even know about.
They do a lot with the youth too that we don't know about, and we have services that most people don't know about, so we should promote those.
Put that in the paper, Donna. All that.
Okay, moving on to number eight, proclamation, Arbor Day, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Official proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Robert Smith, Mayor of the City of Plainview, can hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three as Arbor Day in the City of Plainview. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Gated this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Do we have a tree board?
Yes.
Yes.
Want to say who's on that tree board?
I knew right now, I'll tell you.
You know who it is.
Brent Moller, Valerie Peters, and Jason Smith.
There you go.
I did know that.
Did you want to say who's on the library board?
Oh, well, that would be a little harder. It's Megan Porter.
No.
You both.
No. She's on the pool board.
Megan Porter.
Do you want to tell us who's on the library board since I'm sure you know?
Megan Porter, Valerie Tar, Baterna, and Jody. Jessica Brown.
Yep.
And then opening.
And he's going to do the opening for Jessica.
Yes. Okay, moving on to number ten, discussion, action.
We did that.
We did that.
We did that one and then that last one.
Whoa, we can cross that out. Number eleven, discussion, action, twenty TF RH thirty-five oh, twenty-three drawdown number six for sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
So you're getting into the match port, or the grant portion now of the housing. Everything so far has been paid out of our match that we contributed and that Jim contributed. So this goes to the drawdown process now to send to the state. So she gave me this one and she, there's another one here too that she snuck in yesterday before five, so I put it on the agenda for you, so that's why you had an extra one in there. But we can approve this one and then we do next ones with her together. This all come back from the state, so this is part of the, part of the grant, so we'll pay and get it back.
So there we go.
Any questions on that?
Somebody's giving us some money.
Okay, moving on to number twelve, then. Does this make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the drawdown number six of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
I'll second. You want to name the other one?
Yeah, I'll have a second one.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian. Aye.
Okay.
So if you want to skip down to thirty, that's the next one if you're interested, Mr. Mayor.
Thirty.
That's the other one for the housing.
Do that one now?
Yeah.
Okay, number thirty, discussion, action, twenty TF RH thirty-five oh, twenty-three drawdown number seven for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents added for ten, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the drawdown number seven for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second that motion, second.
All right, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Green? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we are on number twelve. Discussion, action, resolution number six seventy-one, extension request for twenty DTR zero zero five grant completion.
So we did this back in October. We asked for a year and they only gave us six months, so I'm back again to get another six months so we can finish off the DTR grant in November.
Of course we're going to finish this.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution, resolution six seven one.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, we go down to number thirteen, discussion, action, approval of Housing Board recommendation for PLVWHR nineteen, housing loan for twenty-five thousand dollars.
So the Housing Board met at the end of March. The meeting minutes are in there and then kind of the, the write-up that they get as to what is being done on the house. This is all funding that is available through the rehab process, so they have money out there for this project to be completed. So you guys just need to give your approval that it's okay.
One house, right?
Yes. And they do have money out there, I think, for two more right now, so hopefully we'll have a couple more come through.
Are they offering this amount or does it vary?
Uh, the matching goes twenty-five, so. But you have to make sure you get all your work that needs to be done within that twenty-five thousand. If you can't get it done, they won't let you, you can't do partial, you have to do everything.
Four percent, is that it?
Yeah.
Or, uh, zero percent?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Zero percent.
Five percent.
No, no, zero, zero percent.
You want to say something? No.
I'm just twenty years, I'll go buy a quid for them too.
Yes.
I mean, I don't understand. I, I maybe, this is the right time to ask, but.
There is, there's income levels, um, when they apply, they do income levels to see if, and depends on like how many people in your house and that kind of thing, so.
Is there an age requirement too?
No.
Okay.
No, you just have to own your home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can't have a loan on it? Can you have a loan on it? Loan as we paid off?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. That would be a question for Lee Alexander, because she, CDS does all of this, so we just run the grant through the city, the money through the city, so just.
Can you lend and, and rate on us up with this one too, or is this, this is just fixing up homes?
Um, well, like on this one, um, they're removing like lead paint.
Okay.
Um, they all update like electrical if it's not up to code.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things. So a lot of it's getting houses up to code if they're not to code, so. It's not like they're, you know, they're not putting landscaping in or something for it, or they're doing things that are.
Yeah, improving condition.
Yeah.
I think anytime you have somebody that wants to improve a house is good deal.
I'll say, I don't know, I just want to do this.
No, you don't have to say it.
I make a motion to approve Housing Board recommendations for the PLVW-HR-nineteen housing loan for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Green.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, number fourteen, discussion, action, approval of CDS invoice reuse administration fifty-three for four hundred dollars and reuse lead twenty for one thousand dollars. Plainview HR nineteen added for six.
So these are, they do their inspections on the homes before they do them, so, um, this is appropriated and they do the lead inspection as well, so that's where that came from, but.
Yeah, it comes out of thing grant money.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the CDS invoice reuse admin fifty-three for four hundred dollars and the reuse lead twenty for one thousand dollars.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
All right, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Okay, number fifteen, discussion, action, Keno grants. First one is for the Plainview clown band for one thousand dollars. Repairs, two vans, and I see some miscellaneous other things.
Yeah, the budget included, it looks like. Everybody know who the clown band is?
Right.
Who's on it, huh?
Any discussion?
Yep.
When's the last time they performed? Well, since COVID, it's been kind of.
Yeah, we were, we're prohibited from blowing our instruments in case we blew something to the air.
Still broke the van?
Do you have enough effort? You still.
Oh, yeah, we could always use more, like you, you could go play.
I don't know if I could play my trumpet anymore.
You could, it, you'll just pick it up and you'll know exactly what to do.
You have violence.
Their, their application says, hopefully this spring or early summer, we will have a series of practice recruitment sessions. So if anybody out there, you need to have some effort to reestablish the clown band as part of our community. And they also listed three hundred to promote the clown band and recruitment efforts, five hundred travel expenses associated with promoting Plainview, and two hundred miscellaneous expenses, and I thought I read in there where they said their funds are all depleted, so.
Do two repairs.
I mean operating.
Yep.
Yeah.
Take two repairs.
It's a good thing.
The Chamber used to give us some money and then they didn't have any money, so.
Make a motion to approve the Keno grant for the clown band for one thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Because I think it would be a conflict of interest if I did.
Yeah. I would guess.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, the second one is the Plainview Public Library, one thousand dollars for the summer reading program intern.
I think we did the same out last year, didn't we?
They didn't get one last year. No.
They usually apply for separate.
Yeah, we usually apply through the Nebraska Library Commission every year for an intern grant, and this year we didn't get it, so.
Okay.
We're searching for some other place for some funds. Usually get a summer intern to help out with our youth programs or even summer.
And they come from where do they come?
The high school students.
From high school students.
Yeah. We get a library experience, some work experience, and a little stipend of a thousand dollars to help.
Oh, are you thinking these are people that might want to go into these libraries and that?
Yes.
Do you have any, uh, people in mind, or have you had applications, or?
Not yet.
This is in case we do have some.
Yes.
So you don't necessarily think you might, I mean, if we don't have it, you just won't take the money, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We usually have a few that apply.
Yeah.
We have said.
Right now we have a couple of high school students volunteering after school on our Monday programs.
Oh, perfect.
So we're hoping one of them might want to do the summer internship, but we'd like to pay them something for the so, whole summer.
That would be very nice if you thought that.
That's what we'd like the money for.
I'll make a motion to approve the Keno grant from the Plain, Plainview Public Library for a thousand dollars.
Second. My second motion. All righty, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
All right, the next one is City of Plainview, one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for a sidewalk repair north of Chivers picnic shelter.
So currently everybody's been out there, it's all broken up. Um, we'd like to widen it to make it handicap accessible and be able to actually back something down in there if we have to get tables or anything else out of there. Or they're dropping off things for barbecuing and like that, so we'll grind the curbs out wider and widen the whole entire sidewalk down to the park shelter. And I will use the new and revised Keno grant next time, but this, this quarter, people were using the old one for the record.
My, yes, because it's, it has a limit of a thousand dollars and he's asking for twenty ninety.
Seventeen seventy.
Seventeen seventy.
Next, next one.
What's going to ask for more?
It gets worse.
Yes.
She told me she would still be okay with this.
As long as he clarified why he used the old.
You sure?
Yeah.
I don't know if she lays out or not.
As long as he changes.
Sounds like you make a motion.
I, I don't know how to say it, go ahead.
Only way to learn Creed is to do it for the first time.
It's hard to believe.
Never try to see Creed teach us here.
You want me to?
Yes.
Yes.
I move that we approve the grant for Jeremy to replace the sidewalks for the City of Plainview.
For the City of Plainview.
For Jeremy, you said it, Jeremy.
Jeremy, well, you're in charge of.
He's been in Hollywood.
Contact person says Jeremy. I am want this done.
You know what?
Second.
I will second that. But I am so happy we got her, honestly, tongue tied a little bit.
Yeah.
That's nice.
All right, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
All right, next one up is City of Plainview, two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars installation of electric outlets in Van Shell Park.
Okay, so this is a little brainchild we have, we would like to, we as in the Chamber and any other events, I would like to do things in Van Shell Park. We'd like to move the inflatables to like where the kids used to play soccer out of the do, where the old wellhouse is at. Um, so what really we're just bringing down, if you look at the back, I have a, um, a box that we've written down. So it'd be fifty amp, thirty amp, or twenty amp outlet on every pole. Uh, we have triplex already from when we used to have our own electrical facility. Um, I've contacted the REA, they're willing to help us hang most of it, uh, so it's, and we're going to try using what miscellaneous electrical supplies we currently have and then buy what we don't, so. It's a fairly cheap, I think, investment for what we're going to get out of it.
I think it's a good plan.
Yeah, kids won't burn the field of concrete and then it should open up the street in between the schools for parking and everything else, so.
A lot of good things going on with this.
Yep.
I move to allow this Keno grant for two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the City of Plainview for installation of the electric outlets.
Okay.
Second that.
Tyler?
Aye.
You or? I. Jody?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, next one up is City of Plainview, six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars purchase of trash dumpsters and picnic tables.
Okay, so this will also be utilized when we start having events, especially now that we're having a lot of them all in the same weekend for Chamber and any other events. We, we, uh, need extra dumpsters and everything, obviously, single trash cans don't work that well. Um, Key Sanitation is going to be closing down, they have used dumpsters for sale. And I've looked at, went out and looked at some of them, and there's one, some of them does for four hundred dollars a piece, so two yard dumpsters.
Two yard.
Yep, uh, currently I call Apache a two yard dumpster over twelve hundred dollars, going to buy a brand new.
Apache's high.
Yep.
Can we paint them?
Yeah.
What?
Can we paint them?
Yeah.
We can.
Do whatever you want.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
And then also the picnic tables, uh, we did do ACE, uh, we got four picnic tables, uh, we could do some more, we do have some other repair in need, so.
Okay, I was just going to ask about the other picnic tables that we already have, right?
Yep, we're going to be, yep, we're going to get them.
And these will match those?
Um, we have had, we have a park work being the April nineteenth. Um, currently we have green ones, they've been taught if they want some red ones and maybe split colors up between different parks, but we haven't decided on the park board yet, we're talking, I don't know why, but. I would assume if I be green, I'm hoping.
Are they metal or wood?
They are metal, they're metal with the coating on top.
The new ones.
The new ones are.
The main ones.
Yep.
Same.
Do you have a preference?
I would just prefer they all are the same.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, like, I don't want Christmas in July in the park.
Well, their thought was if they had two different colors, they can keep, keep track of what park they went to. But I agree, I like them all green actually.
Yes, that way if we're using them for one community event, they all match.
Perfect.
And then they'll transport, the boys will transport those nicely, I'm like, don't bang them.
Absolutely.
I move that we approve the Keno grant to the city for six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for the use of the dumpsters from Key Sanitation and four more picnic tables for the parks.
Yeah, that's second.
I'll second either one.
All right, Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, next up is City of Plainview, ten thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars for construction of a RV dump station in Chivers Park. And as Susan mentioned, we're applying for a grant for this. If I remember correctly reading, Jeremy wants to get these funds approved so we can start it and then we can just switch the money around because more than likely we'll get our grant hopefully. If I remember correctly reading, Jeremy wants to get these funds approved so we can get started, and then we can just switch the money around, because more than likely, we'll get our grant hopefully.
Well, if we, if we get our.
It's a nationwide competition, I make no promises on that one.
So if we get our grant from ARP, these funds will not be used, and this will just be thrown out. Um, I wanna do it now because, like you said, it is a large grant throughout the nation, we don't know. And if we're gonna have a curb grinder coming, run the gr- grind a hundred and something foot curb, and I don't wanna wait and then miss out on him already being here, so. Um, I think it's gonna be a great, a great thing for our community. Um, everybody always talks about, we have a nice camping facility, but we have nowhere to go with waste. We have to travel outside of the community to a different town, or wherever they decide to dump it.
Doesn't make it very convenient.
No, it's not convenient, and I think it will be highly used for by many people.
And you plan on putting this north of?
Well, if everything works out right, we'd like to go north of the Chovers bathroom. Uh, we'd like to tap into their sewer there, grind the curb out, and then pour a pad of concrete there, and, um. Nah, I just put, I just put a layout of the price. Um, it's scheduled to have a nice, um, RV actual hose for cleaning out the, cleaning out your sewer dump and the drain and everything, so it should look like most state camper RV dumps.
I would tell you that, um, last summer, when I was working on the weekends, um, the individuals that we utilized, like, the pads, the camper pads. They would stop in on occasion, and there were several people that did, we couldn't speak highly enough about the park, the accommodations, but. The one thing that they were like, oh, I have to drive that far south to dump, and. Like, well, you know, hope you enjoy staying, they really truly did, and they couldn't speak highly enough about our accommodations, just the fact that we don't have a, a place to dump, so. I think that would make it even better.
The city never bothered with that because there was always a dump at the trailer park. But then twenty years ago, there wasn't a trailer park, and then they never got it done. Needs to be there.
Well, in the city of Pierce, they're, they're actually thinking about closing the dump in Pierce, so.
They're removing it.
Oh, are they?
Are they?
Splash pads.
There's one in Oz.
There's splash pads.
I thought there was one in the Osmond.
They don't really wanna mess with them.
I wanna be lawful. There's a fence between the two, there will be, but they just, they don't wanna deal with it, that dump needs some maintenance, and they don't wanna put them in there. Yeah. So.
He's asking for more money.
The only thing I'm worried about that ARP grant is it really focused on how do you, how does it affect fifty-five and older, and I had to get very, very creative. On how an RV dump was gonna affect fifty-five.
It doesn't have many.
Yeah, exactly.
I know, I mean, I used Highway twenty or historic route, I did everything, but you know what, I don't know if it's gonna be enough, so.
Yeah, there'll never be anybody that comes in that's under the age of forty ever come in, so I'm just saying, so.
I don't know, I just.
Art Ryans should have been the first thing to talk about.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the Keno grant for ten thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars for the RV dump station.
Second.
I'll second my motion.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
We'd just like to add, it's all excellent, uh, projects, use of that money for our town.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
For anybody in the audience, we have a lot of money, so we're glad to spend it.
Don't tell them that, I need some of this.
New form. Yeah, new form.
I'm, well, I mean, we're spending a lot of money, they may be wondering, you know, what we're doing here. Are you wondering what we're doing?
I like to shop.
And we're, and we budgeted a lot of Keno funds, so it's all like, it's all Keno money.
Yeah.
Julie's here, help you.
Yes. Julie, would you like to comment?
Sure, sorry about my attire, but it's too hot. And thanks for letting me watch fifty-three point three seconds to win it, so thank you very much for letting me be late. Um, just a couple of updates, um, coronavirus, uh, we did have a staff person test positive today. So we tested all the residents, and they're all negative, we'll test Sunday three and day five, so Thursday and, um, Saturday, we'll test again, that employee worked Sunday. So we could have a nice window there, or we could start seeing an outbreak, um, there's currently an outbreak in an assisted living out in O'Neill, so it's everywhere. Um, no exemptions, uh, lots of help wanted, still working on a lot of those. Um, our cable TV, everything got installed twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, that's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, have, we got one little glitch happening, one TV keeps, uh, reprogramming itself, and it loses a few channels, but once we reprogram, it works good. Um, so waiting to, if it's the resident that's hitting a button on the remote or something, instead of only happening to one TV, we're not certain there. Um, employee health insurance, we had tabled it the month previously, uh, we kinda went over some discussion with the city, and with the mayor, and where we're at. Um, some different ideas, since then, I've done the homework that they asked to about marketplace, that's really not gonna be an option for us either, uh, based on our costs. Um, so we'll have to go back to the next board meeting and, uh, see what we wanna increase the insurance to. We don't have any other choices, this is where we're gonna have to stay for another year. Uh, and it doesn't look pretty, I mean, that's the all-around thirteen point five eight, I think, percent on that. Um, we did have our Medicaid, um, assisted living annual survey on three twenty-two, and we were deficiency free, that is a survey that does get announced every year. Um, state surveys do not get announced, um, so I am in my window, so they're twelve to fifteen months. So we're looking anytime now until about the end of June, um, that they could come out, and that one, again, is unannounced, that's the life safety code inspection also. Um, along with the state inspection. Assisted living, we're right at five years, um, and since COVID has happened, they're really, really far behind, supposed to be at least every five years. But there are facilities that are sitting seven to ten years out, so I don't think my five's that bad, there's no issues there. Um, we had a great turnout at our Easter egg hunt last Saturday, the weather was more cooperative, and we had a great prom, facility prom on the thirty-first. Question, comments? Thank you.
I do have a question, Julie.
Yep.
On your, um, check register, check five four zero zero three, it says Lutz.
That's my, um, Medicare cost report, that's my audit.
Okay.
Yep, so that's the entire year cost report, we pay it all at once, we got a Medicare, Medicaid, and an end year.
Okay.
An AUL.
What's an AUL?
Retirement.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, number sixteen, discussion, action, open bids and approval for rent of hay ground by New Lagoons.
I've got some, I've got some lease blanks here, if you get that far, so I'll hand them down if you decide to do something.
All the rest of them say farm, like seventeen acres, but that.
Are they separated here?
Yeah, they're two different ones.
We were, we had a tie last.
Right, they're going between two pieces for the.
Brandon Myers needs, uh, a chart, yeah, two.
This says hay ground bid one hundred and twenty-six dollars on City of Lagoons, Trenton Tar.
Per acre, because last one's a hundred dollars, so.
Yeah.
Yes. And is this the other, is there two?
Yeah, and I don't know if that one is, it just says farm ground, so I'm not sure if it's, I don't know who dropped it off, it was in the Dropbox, I have no idea. Who brought it in? So if it's not from the hay ground, then it goes to the next one.
Chance Anderson?
Nope, that will go to the next one.
What's his?
That will go to.
Well, this is for the seventeen acres.
Yep, so it'll just be.
Brandon must not have decided.
Did he not resubmit a bit?
No, he just got the one.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, but sixteen's separate.
Just the one for now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, I guess I mo- make a motion to approve the one twenty-six per acre bid by Trenton Tar for the hay ground on the New Lagoons.
Second. Second my motion. Okay, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Okay, number seventeen, discussion, action, open bids and approval for rent of farm ground by Old Lagoons. So this is from Chance Anderson, I would like to bid three thousand dollars for the seventeen acres of farm ground available for rent.
That per acre or for the whole thing, for the whole safety?
I would be for the whole.
Three thousand or seventeen?
Probably not per acre.
Go with the rest of them.
The longer one is for Courtney.
This one is, um.
I'll hand it down, I'll take one of these.
This one is from Peter Boobles. I bid two thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars on seventeen acres of Lagoons. This is from Tim Johnson, Johnston, to give a bid of two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventeen cents for the seventeen acre of crop ground. This is from Lyle Leenfelter, I submit a bid of two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the seventeen acres. This is a bid for the parcel of Old Lagoon ground next to the transfer station. One more. Okay, Trenton Tar farm ground bid, three hundred and six dollars on seventeen acres.
Is that per acre?
Yeah.
Per acre on seventeen acres.
Fifty-two oh two.
How much is it, Jeremy?
Fifty-two oh two, that's.
That says three oh six on seventeen acres.
Yep.
So.
Better hook in that per acre.
Maybe Ryan knows that in the stands, I guess.
I would say. Or is he, is that per acre?
Yeah.
Same thing, here's the long one for Courtney, just so you can see it there, but.
Three oh six on seventeen acres.
Okay, no, I just, I'm gonna make it clear.
What is it clear, is that?
Three hundred and six.
Legal savings, passing down the burden.
Three hundred and six times seventeen, so it's five thousand two hundred dollars.
One of each of these.
With the total for the, to convert to all the other amounts.
These are the same forms you've had before, but they're just with a blank for the name and a blank for the dollars, probably usable? Did you guys see anything you needed to change out there? Too much unblocking trim?
What's that?
Yeah.
What?
So I think you can just fill in the blanks and keep the.
Sure did.
Keep the original.
Say, oh, you almost lost.
So we have a motion on the.
Are you waiting to verify from Trenton and back with what he did?
Yeah, that's what he, I'm, I'm sure, yeah, that's what he did, I, I texted him, he just read it right now, we'll see if he says something about that or not.
Now, he can't mean three hundred and six total.
No.
Three oh six acre for Trenton.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Trenton Tar for the farm ground by the old, or the, the transfer station.
I second.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Alright, number eighteen. Question, action, approval of pool board recommendations for employees.
You should have the meeting minutes there, they had their meeting last night.
Oh, those in?
Yep, they're in your stuff, I gave you tonight.
How do these compare to last year, do you know?
As far as, as far as what?
Thirteen dollars for an hour for the managers, that?
I'm just talking about the hires right now, wages are separately.
She's just talking about employees right now.
Yeah.
Where the hires are separate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Are most of these returning guards?
Um. There's, there, there's six that are new, that are listed there. They haven't worked here before, and then the rest of them all worked here last, last year, or previously worked here.
And both, all three managers are returning?
Um, Allison was manager last year, um. Ronnie was assistant manager last year, she's not gonna assistant manager this year, she's gonna lifeguard.
Okay.
And then Bailey said she wanted to do assistant manager, and then Heather applied for assistant manager, so. The pool board kinda thought it'd be okay to have two assistant managers, it gives a little more flexibility of scheduling and taking time off if, if they have two of them.
Maybe this question, I don't know if it's for the pool board, but, so the assistant managers and the manager all have their manager license, they all three have to be certified as managers?
They all have their pool operator license, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
And that, that's what allows them to be in charge of everyone at that time.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure that Allison wasn't the one getting it, the other two were just entitled.
Nope, they have to have their licenses, they're pool managers for their license, yeah.
Well, with that being said, I make a motion to approve the pool board recommendations for employees.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Alright, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, number nineteen, discussion, action, pool, pool board recommendations for wages.
I don't know where they talked about it, uh, really what we did is, we usually add twenty-five to fifty cents every hour for when you're, for every year, extra year on there. So kinda how we started was worked our way back, we added Allison, and then we split the difference between what she nor- what she got last year and minimum wage, and then. So that's how we got her at thirteen dollars, I guess, so last year she was at.
Eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy-five, yeah, so that's how we figured thirteen dollars, so she'll get the same difference, I'm saying plus her twenty-five cents a year, I would usually do, so.
I'm starting the new guards at minimum wage, so.
Yep.
Get more than when I come to serendipity. You only get nine fifty to come to serendipity.
Yes, no, please.
Minimum wage is ten fifty, correct?
And then after that, you have more than sixty. They're happy, so.
I'll use that as a, as a selling point from now on, you wanna see somebody tight.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation wages for the pool employees.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareem.
Oh, aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Jody, discussion, action, approval, pool board recommendation, pool pass prices for twenty twenty-three.
They all went up, uh, ten dollars, except for the pool party, went up twenty-five, and then we added, went from junior high to adult from three to five, and K through six went two to four.
Well, we motion to approve the recommendation pool pass prices for two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
I'll second my motion.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tyler. Okay, number twenty-one, discussion, action, approval of seasonal park employees.
Um, we only had two applicants, they were Zach Cahill and William Holder, and we'd like to start them at eleven dollars an hour, so. We normally have three, but we only had two applicants apply, so.
We have a motion to approve the seasonal park employees.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Brian.
Do you want to abstain? William, that's not.
Oh.
Yeah, he does want to abstain, I suppose.
Sure.
Alright, Jody.
Aye.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
I'll put you down.
Twenty-two, discussion, action, approval of wages for seasonal park employees.
And you said it was eleven?
We suggested eleven, yep.
And the other one are returning, so.
Nope, none are returning, but I feel like they do a lot more laborious work, and.
Yes.
Feel like.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion to approve the wages for seasonal park employees at eleven dollars an hour.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian, I'll abstain. Number twenty-three, discussion, action, approval of hiring a part-time police officer.
So, the one that, do you want me to get up there and, like?
Yes.
They don't understand.
Come on.
Their writers are studying you, right?
Exercise.
Stretch it out for you.
Oh, yeah, stretch it out. Um, the one individual that I was really leaning toward, Ron Westlake, he absolutely wants nothing to do with law enforcement any longer, fair enough. So, I've been talking to Wes Torson, he's deputy for Pierce County. And he kinda fit to me a little bit, but I'll have a conversation with him about that another day, I was supposed to speak with him today, but Rick told him he had to disstep, so. I didn't get to have an opportunity to sit down and discuss or negotiate what he is requesting to get paid an hour, I don't know if you guys want me to let you know what he was asking for. Um, he wa- he was like twenty-five dollars an hour, part-time, um, no weekends, no nights. And we will discuss this, so, um, that's all I've got right now. I just have to.
Are there any other deputies working for Pierce County that would be interested in working? Jacob or?
No, Jacob won't, no, um, he's with Na- he works part-time with Nailey PD, um. And Tom, Tom won't work part-time, 'cause he's newly married. Dan's already on the roster, however, the point of me getting tired of this, I can spend time with my husband, and so that'd be kind of a moot point, so. Oh, Tony Becker, are you guys familiar with him? He used to work for Pierce County as a deputy, and he's already certified, I haven't reached out to him. He used to work for Pierce County as a deputy, and he's already certified, I haven't reached out to him, he's working over in the co-op in Randolph right now, and. Um, I will call him and see if he'd be, consider maybe once a week, but he, his certifications are current, so maybe I can get him to come over and work a day. It's going to be about three months before I feel comfortable with Andrew, once he's certified to really be on his, like, own a hundred percent, so that'll give me some, you know, time off, more time off, so. That's where we are.
Tony D Osmond in Randolph also?
What's that?
Tony, can he do Osmond in Randolph?
I don't, I don't know about that, I just know Pierce County, so, that's where we are, and I'll talk to Wes, eight twenty-five's a little bit steep, so. And we'll, we'll have a conversation.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, we'll table, we'll hear back. Number twenty-five, discussion, action, approval of special designated liquor licenses. First one is Plainview Chamber of Commerce, June second, eight P M to two A M for street dance.
I guess I can talk about it, um, we're going to do a street dance Friday night after the bull ride, which the bull ride's going to be what it was last year, um, they want to do a street dance the same place it did last year, um, just that block of locusts, um. And the chamber decided to do the liquor license this year instead of, um, having the bars do it, so that's what that's for. It'll all be fenced off, and just like it was last year, so I don't think there'll be any issues.
Kind of later was last year?
No.
Should be a good mind maker for the chamber.
I make a motion to approve the special designated liquor license.
Second?
Second?
I'll second it.
Uh, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, next one up is Plainview Chamber of Commerce, June third, seven thirty A M to midnight, sand volleyball and cornhole tournaments.
Again, the same thing they did last year, there was a map, there's a map there for you guys, so, um, they're going to do sand volleyball in the morning, and then cornhole will be, um, Saturday night, so. It'll just be one liquor license for the entirety of both open vents, um, so that way, if, you know, people are down with the vents, they can, and then, food trucks are down, if they want to go grab food and sit in and have a beer with them, they're welcome to do that as well, but. Um, we'll have fence up like we did last year.
Make a motion to approve the special liquor license, um, seven thirty A M to midnight for the sand volleyball and cornhole tournaments.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Next one up is Keystone, June third, nine A M to five P M, Highway twenty hot rod car show.
Okay, as you can see, we've made the decision to move the car show to clown days, and convert them all together, have one big celebration instead of dividing it up into two weekends, so. I just want to, um, throw out there, I can get your blessing to do the open container permit like I've done in the past, and it'll be patrolled, it's not licensed, or it's not fenced, but. We can do it the same way we've been doing it, and we've got a really good.
Do you really have a hundred people more for that car show than you do the street dance?
What's that?
You think that'll be a hundred more people for the car show than the street dance? I don't know.
Not all of them are there, not all of them are there for that length of time.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
People walk through, they walk through again, and then they leave.
Yeah.
And then you have new come.
I know about the people that have cars, travel, they don't stick around.
Yeah, some stay, some don't.
I think that's a good number to expect.
Yeah, it's, yeah, especially with the amount of cars that we get. You know, so, I mean, if you, are you going to have two hundred people there at once, possibly, maybe not, you know, but they come and they go, and this year with different things going on with clown days. Trying to make it to where people will go and have other things to do while their car's sitting there.
We're going to have a map where other events and things are going on, so while people are waiting for their cars to be judged, they can walk across the highway and, you know, events are there.
That sounds good.
My, I guess my only concern with that is that you're not going to have fences up, and you're going to have other stuff going on in town. Can we? Put signs or something on your beer stands?
There'll be, there'll be signs on the streets.
That say, do not pass this plane or something?
Right, and where, where the liquor, where the license is at is for where the cars are, but once, so if the side streets, you know, wherever the cars are at, you can take your beers to. Because we did initially do just look the street, and then people are like, I just got a beer, but I want to go look at these cars down this street, and they couldn't. So, it's where the cars are.
Okay.
And we patrolled that really well, and I tried to set my, my stations where they can see down this street, they can see down that street, you know, and I'm all over that day, and I've got other people watching and stuff too, so. Where we opened that up, it's a little easier, then that way they can go look at those cars and then come back.
We'll make sure all of our committee members know that, to reiterate that to people that, you know, beyond this point.
Okay.
That's what you did last year.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to tell them to be sensible.
And, you know, they do really well, because you look at it this way, people are not there to come and.
Aye.
Party, yeah.
Party, right, they're cut, they're there to walk around and look at cars, drink a beer, maybe two, you know, some sticks.
Well, I hope it's cold. Well, probably be hot.
It's always hot.
Beer better be cold.
It, oh, it'll be cold, it'll be cold, it'll be cold, and we want. We're tired of the snow, we need some summer.
Tyler, do you have any other discussion or anything?
I do not, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for June third, nine A M to five P M for Highway twenty hot rod car show by Keystone.
Second?
I'll second.
Alrighty, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Okay, next up is Keystone, June third, seven P M to two A M for a street dance.
Okay, so on the bull ride, they're going to be doing a country band on, um, the Friday night, so I am bringing in an old rock and roll band for Saturday night. And I would just like to do it on the Maple Street, like I usually do, from the alley to the stop sign right there in between Keystone and Midwest Lake. Or Madison County night, do you many curses that's up? That's a big. Yo, just one street.
When is the bull ride?
Friday night.
Friday night?
Yeah.
What day is Fri, June seventh? But they, they still come over two city limits, and I'm a little concerned, I just will, I will throw my concern out there. Uh, One Deep, county may come up, we got the bull riders, we got the locals, we got other people coming in, I'm afraid that there might be some fights, so are we going to have security? I mean, I can throw down, I just don't think I can throw down like they can.
This street dance, her street dance is the next day.
This isn't the same day as Bull Ride.
Mine is on Saturday.
Our, ours is Friday night.
I, yeah, what's that?
Mine's on Saturday.
We've already approved yours, so.
Ours is on Friday.
The Chambers is on Friday.
Alright, I, okay, can I?
But I would have to suggest to them that they do that, because that's what we did last year, and thank you very much for coming through, and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it'll, just, yeah, I don't need anybody.
I agree, I agree with you, that's why we, uh, had that taken care of last year, and so, yeah, we'll probably do that, with that meeting more.
So no street dance Friday night?
There's, yes, there is.
We already approved the bull ride.
The Chambers doing the one at night.
Both nights.
So. I'll make, I'll coordinate with county. See who's working. The Chamber can discuss some of the issues.
Yeah.
Alright, so, June third, I make a motion to approve the liquor license from seven P M to two A M, June third, for the street dance.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Alrighty, Tyler.
Uh, Kareem.
Uh, Jody.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one up is Keystone for June tenth, six P M to two A M, street dance, added four, six of twenty twenty-three.
I, uh, yeah, if the next, it's the following weekend, it's the following Saturday after, it'll be the sixteenth annual must run. That day, and Dave Seinkraus has, um, hired Cactus Flats to come up that weekend again, and it would be, again, be from, on the west side of Keystone, from the alley to the, the stop sign on that side of, of Cactus Flats, so.
Make a motion to approve liquor license, June tenth, six P M to two A M for Keystone.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alrighty, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Okay, number twenty-six, discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have a good time.
Number forty-six, discussion, action, resolution number six seventy-three, approval of street closures for clown days.
Um, so we just have two, um, ones for the street dance, obviously, that you guys just approved the liquor license for, and there's a map in there for you, that's the area that we're planning on using. And then others for clown days, just that little section right in front of the bandshell, um, since we're going to put all the plugins in the park, well, that'll open up, um, Maple, and then all of, uh. Woodland in between schools, so we just need that little chunk between Main Street and Maple Street closed off. That's where the food trucks will be, and the fire truck rides and stuff will be marked right there, so.
I make a motion to approve resolution six seventy-three for the street closures for clown days.
Okay, second?
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Number twenty-seven, discussion, action, resolution number six seventy, approval of street closures for Highway twenty hot rod car show, June third, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to pass resolution six seventy?
Second.
Alrighty, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Either one or less, I don't care.
Well, I guess it's Brian, too.
Our only change to that from years past would be, um, the vendor show's going to move to Maple Street instead of.
And that's already closed off, so that's not an issue. Nope.
Just so you're aware.
Alright, number twenty-eight, discussion, action, resolution number six seven two, updates to street closure on Woodland Avenue between Maple and King Street.
Go ahead.
Look, I don't have that.
This is Bruce, this is from last meeting.
Well, we had discussion, there were copies there, I didn't bring another set of copies, and I, what do you want to do? And I can write that thing up however you want, you.
Oh, this is the one where they.
Talk about the police, but then.
The, the, yeah, so, that's what we discussed the last meeting, was just.
That it's either you or.
It's a simple matter to say anything you want to say, but, right now, remember it says essentially barricades at the direction of the police train. Which is probably kind of okay, but do you need to change that, or what do you want to do?
You want it written down that you're going to put a letter to the school?
Well, I thought that's what we discussed the last, I thought that's what it was, and then we were done with it.
Yeah. You just wrote the letter to pass.
Yeah, and then that they can, designating them to put the barricades up, and that was it.
As deemed necessary or whatever.
Yeah.
So for the moment, just leave it alone and work with the letter and try and get them straightened out?
I mean, I think the letter that we had, that we were, saw last time, pretty much says that you or someone of your designation. Right.
Yeah.
I think last time you took like one word out, so I didn't know if that was, but, we want to do a whole new resolution to change one word, but.
I think they went to just change.
I thought the initial problem was that the barricades were supposed to be at the intersections, which cut off a lot of traffic flow, so now they're between, in a smaller area between the two schools, I thought that was the problem.
Well.
Not whether you did it or not.
The traffic flow is more like the parking, which I think is good, they need the parking that, when, you know, like that little walkway that they have, it opened up that parking. Bringing them together, and I don't care who moves them, as, I just don't have time to do it. Yeah. So it just needs to read that, you know, the chief designated so-and-so the school to allow to move the barricades.
As needed.
As necessary.
Because as you said, legally, you have to have some authority that says that.
Right, right. Yeah. I don't think we need to change anything from what it said.
I think we're good.
Yeah. And the letter will.
You could add, use good judgment, but then.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to change a resolution just for that.
But will they?
No, I won't, I think we should just leave it.
Yeah. Brian?
I think we.
Leave it? You need a motion over? No?
Perfect.
Awesome. Okay, we'll go on to number twenty-nine, then, discussion, action, transfer station open May sixth, eight A M to eleven thirty A M. So this is what we normally do for, we usually, or we have in the past, open it up on a Saturday, one Saturday in the springtime, this falls between, this falls after garage sales and before graduation, so hopefully, whatever you don't sell, and you can throw away. And if you're ready to clean out your garage for graduation, you can throw that away too, um, it's not set up to be free, I would kind of stop that, so people, because the thing is, when you have things for free, one, we have people from outside the community trying to dump their stuff in, who, this is for grandma or whatever, but, um, none of that, then, when it comes to fall time, and you want people to clean up their houses, we're waiting for free dump day, you know? And so you're, you're, in my opinion, which we can change it, but in my opinion, you're kind of promoting people to clean once a year instead of keeping things clean, so, we normally just, um, bill them out, they, they dump, and then they pay, so.
I've thought about this, and wondered, why do we have more junk now that we see than we used to, but we used to have the old dump that everybody could go out to and dump whatever they want to do, and then the EPA probably said that wasn't a nice idea.
And you can't do that.
No, and so now they just leave it outside their house, yes, so we still have a problem, but we'll deal with it in coming months.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's why we used to have so much stuff.
So last year when we had this on a Saturday, wasn't used by a lot of people, even though they had to pay for it, it was so well-used.
I couldn't tell you, ma'am, but it was, it was definitely used, um, that's the one thing we hear is, well, you're never open on the weekends, you know, we all work during the week. Oh, yeah, so this is, this is their type of chance to, well, you have a Saturday, and, and there's nothing to say that we can't wait another two months in the middle of summer and open up again on a Saturday, but we.
I was just going to ask that, we do it, and then.
We can do it again, and.
Because they're going to be advertised, right?
Yeah, we'll start advertising this happens, bro, um, we called, we already, because I think we got to make sure is that, um, Shaver Grains opened, because it's their scale and everything, and they are, so, and we go from eleven thirty, because they close at twelve, so that way we can get them dumped, and then wait back out. So. I mean, we can do one in the fall, too. Absolutely, yep, yep, yeah, we can do it a couple times a year if we wanted to. Yeah. I thi, I think this one's going to be set up at the right time for in between two big events.
Agreed.
You want us to do something about that, or just say good luck?
No, make a motion.
Yep, you can approve it, yep, so then we.
Do you have to make a motion?
Yep.
We'll, we'll have overtime, pay them any for our guys that out there dumping, and.
Okay.
That's worth it.
That's just an approved thing. I move that we approve the transfer station being open May sixth from eight A M to eleven thirty P M, A M, A M.
I can approve the P M. Alrighty, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, this is number thirty-one, discussion, action, executive session, possible purchase of property at pool five, Nor Pine, by St. Anthony.
So do I need to make a motion that we enter an executive session?
Well, hang on a second, we got a little discussion to be had, just so you know where you're headed.
Perfect.
Yeah, Jeremy and I went over, you're talking about Judy Burden's property.
Correct.
Jeremy and I went over and we talked to Judy, and she is perfectly willing, I think, uh, subject to negotiated price, and that would be the topic of executive session. But she's willing to sell a big chunk of the lot, right south of it, with the house on it, to expand the parking lot of the library, and it would be probably a good thing to expand the parking lot of the library. And we've talked about trying to survey it, which, is that pending, I didn't hear.
We, we haven't done yet, because if the council chose not to, I wasn't going to survey something that was.
We had her agreement to kind of draw a line halfway between the house and her garage, and say you'd sell down to here, and she said yes, but it would need to be surveyed to know what that is exactly. And then she would sell the whole north slab off that property to the library, which would extend the parking lot by fifty feet, or something like that. Uh, so that's, that's the topic of discussion, but if you want to talk about negotiations, or what you think it's worth, or whether Jeremy should really make an offer. Uh, we need some authority, and maybe you want an executive session, whatever you want to do there, you certainly have the right to an executive session to discuss real estate negotiation.
And I just suggested that, because obviously if somebody says it's worth X, Y, you know, she can look back at everything, you don't want to, you don't want to.
And I just suggested that, cause obviously if somebody says it's worth X, Y, you know, she can look back at everything, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, you know, make or accept one way or the other, so.
The rest of the conversation was Judy would like to at least net enough to clean up her garage, because she will have to change the garage to open East and West instead of open to the north, because that would take her out onto this property. And she's willing to do that, but she'd have to get paid enough money to do it, she doesn't wanna go backwards. And she was, of course, she kinda said she'd like to have enough money to build a new garage, but that might be a little bit of a stretch.
A new garage is quite spending.
But this garage would have to be remodeled and a garage door moved. And then we, I guess the other thing we talked about, fix the garage, and probably put up a plastic fence or something to, to barricade off the library's property once you're done. Cause that way cars in and out of here at eight o'clock at night wouldn't be shining headlights in her window and what have you. So I would think the city, you know, and that's what you need to pre- maybe talk about, you need to talk about this fence, garage cost, demolition costs.
Yes.
And what you wanna do, or if you wanna do. Only to talk about the real estate negotiations, you're certainly entitled to do an executive session if you want to.
Well, the only other thing I'd add to is that the library foundation has been talking about having an outside reading area, which you are very limited on the amount of real estate that you have around the library, so if you add some here, you'd at least have some room for that, do you agree?
I'd rather have this parking, we really need parking.
Well, we do need parking, but if you get all of that, then you could just have a little gazebo out there.
Yeah, we're not adding the bathroom.
I'm not reading in the sun, Donna.
Yeah. But we only need parking.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can continue the discussion here, but probably to talk about what you wanna do for price shouldn't be generally out until Jeremy goes and talks to Judy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good, but do we wanna do public comments first?
Do it, good idea.
Okay, I mean, I imagine you guys are Instagram.
I would think the whole town would support an extra parking lot for the library, it's crowded.
It, it does get crowded, for the vents with hole.
I don't think they use the meeting room quite a bit, don't they, so when you have meetings and such here, it gets pretty crowded.
Yeah, they usually have to park over the church lot or around the outside.
You do some uphill ordering, uphill, there's a circle.
I think you're.
Do we know how many spaces it would add?
I'm trying to get things going.
Jeremy, do you know how many spaces that would add?
Um, well, it depends on the layout, and if you do an out- outside thing, I would sit, I would guess it would over double what you have here on this, on this side, it's more than that, so.
Just, just eyeballing it, it looks like it'd be twice as big as the parking lot you have.
Yep, it all depends on the layout.
At least, and good design could make it better than that, if you've got it as a pass-through or something.
And there, and there might be a deal where if you pay her enough, you might buy, buy a thing and take down the garage there, I mean, there's probably that too. I mean, it's up to you guys, what you guys wanna do, I mean, if you want the more, I'm sure if you paid her enough, she can start building the garage.
Well, if, she would not care about the existing garage if she could build another one off the east of her house.
Right.
And then you might get another fifteen feet, but it depends on how far you wanna go with it.
Yeah.
Yep.
The house that's there has been vacant for how long?
Well, just a couple years, it's not been all that long.
Yeah. Get rid of it.
I believe they said the last person to live there was um Brian Bowman, so whenever he moved into his house.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is before I got here, so it's over three years.
We were in, we were in and out of it, it's not, it's not falling in, but it's barely worthy of saving.
Well, yeah.
Worth more to make it go away if you wanna parking.
So, executive session, we can talk about it, or I guess Tyler, Tyler was suggesting it, you want public comments, like he's saying on the bottom.
Is there anybody here?
Oh, that wants to.
And then, so that way we can.
Public comment, I just wanna, is this time?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to um give a, give you guys a thank you, nothing, um, big or important, but just a thank you to the, to the council for um last year, well, I think uh June, June, January, maybe December. Uh, for keynote grants for the post-prom party, this is, we just handed that out to all the businesses and anybody who uh donated um towards that, so, just wanted to give you that.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, well, that's pretty funny.
Can you break it off, please?
Can you just sit here a whole meeting just for?
I did, that's okay, it's interesting.
You would do this, I'm like, yeah.
I'm just like Brad, I think it's funny, you haven't got yours yet, well, don't be off the way.
All right, all right.
If you don't, I, yeah, she'll come still around backstage.
Get your own, it's great, too.
Thank you.
I have something I wanna mention, though, and it won't take that long, when Andrew um graduates the academy, his dad flew in from Seattle. Um, and then his father, father-in-law's also coming, he really wants to be sworn in by you, even though he's gonna be sworn in down there, but he kinda likes the, you know, the, oh, look at me.
Formality.
Kind of thing, he knows the formality of it, so, um, it's on a Friday, the twenty-first is a Friday, it's about a two-hour drive from Grand Island back here. Um, would you guys be all right if we did like a cake, and obviously not drinks, but that would be kinda cool.
And that's May.
Huh?
April.
April, yeah.
I will not be here.
You won't?
Marie graduates from nursing school.
That's super incredible. Um, I kinda wanted to do it that day, cause his dad's here, so I think that would be very important for him, um, so I don't know, like, if maybe.
You mean like an open house waiting for the community?
Kind of, yeah, and it's, would, is serendipity maybe be an option?
Sure.
Um, it'd be like around five o'clock on that Friday. Um, cake and whatever, drinks, I mean, punch, pop, whatever.
She's weird, what is it?
She doesn't like it.
That I'm not from a uniform, I don't have a beer, I don't care, it's been a long time coming, so, I would just wanted to throw that out there, it's, I think, I think it'd be a.
Yeah, where's that? I love that.
I agree, so.
Open up the doors so the community can meet and greet by five o'clock.
Five, 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 on the twenty-first?
On the twenty-first, yeah.
At three?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty-first.
Twenty first.
At your place.
Yeah.
This is after he passes the exam, right?
Yes. You will know, uh, all right, if that's the case, then.
That's just it, like, cause you have to advertise it, so how do you play, when does he pass the exam, when do you know?
Yes. You will, I will know. They test on Friday before, so that Friday before, what day, that before being?
The fourteenth.
This Friday.
Yeah.
Damn week, damn it.
Yeah.
We can get it out there.
Yeah, it can be in the paper.
Put it on the email, the point you have G C in my text message.
You mail the chamber businesses.
I've gotten a lot of comments from you who love that, by the way.
I do.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
A lot of people love that text messaging system, yeah, gotten all, all great comments.
Yep. Yes.
I love my hands across my phone, I'm so surprised.
Yeah, I bet you are.
Well.
Gee, I wonder if we're gonna text.
Give you a reason, huh?
Uh, you know what, I am not going to make a comment right now, I pray that he passes. I mean, I don't wanna speak it, because I just don't, so.
I think, I think he'll pass, I believe in my heart.
Well, he probably went, probably about a year or two soon, he can't use that forty-seven point seven million dollars that they're gonna upgrade the COVID infrastructure.
They're actually going to build one in Lincoln.
Well, they didn't say that.
Well, state control's gonna move to Lincoln.
From Martin.
Yeah.
Oh, Grand Island.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'm out.
We're gonna recall the council call?
Yeah, let's do council call.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Then we'll be done after.
No, I don't have.
I've been talking all the time. Have you been?
Okay, I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
Aye.
Green.